Really easy to get back there. There's a...
How do you get back there?
So, you can drive. You can actually drive up until...
Okay, wait. I'm gonna back up for a moment.
Yep.
What is the road to the right-hand side?
Elm Street.
Okay, so you're going through the other solar field?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let me just take a minute and give a little bit of background. I'm Greg Lucini. I've been before you guys many times. That's why I developed the Elm Street Array, the existing solar array. And I also developed the array on William Street. Those are probably all those two.
So Elm Street right here.
So we, I, in the case of the Elm Street Array, I own all this land. The original section we developed, a couple of years ago, originally sold it to Sun Edison. Sun Edison went bankrupt. We took it back, worked with them to find an ultimate buyer, who's NRG. NRG now owns it, and they actually completed it. So we'll be going for commercial operation date within the next few weeks, actually. They're just stringing the final connection lines. The next phase of this project is to move to the other side of the transmission line, up on the top of Huntress Hill.
This is this one right here.
Okay.
So the, yeah, the power lines are...
Okay.
So this is on the west side of Huntress Hill. Again, it's very, it's similar to the project we initially did on Elm Street, where you can't see it from the road. It's totally blocked. There's no, you can't see it. It's in the middle of nowhere, essentially. And we think it's a great solar site for that reason. It's not gonna be in anybody's view shed. And we're gonna run the power lines to connect it right down, the existing power lines used for the existing array. We're gonna use the existing roads that were used for the existing array.
So this is the same company, the same people?
We are going to sell this array. I'm doing the development like I did before.
Yeah.
And I own the land. And I'm gonna sell this to NRG. They've already agreed to buy it.
You're gonna sell the electricity or the, or the project?
The site, the solar site itself. I'll continue to own the land. I'm gonna sell the solar project to NRG.
Okay.
Yeah, keep going.
So there's a road to get back there, up until, let's see. Greg, where does that, 'cause I ca, actually came in through here. I know there's a path.
Came through the horse farm, sure. The, the road goes up all the way through to the easement, to the transmission line?
And then it turns to a walking trail.
Then it's a walking trail.
And that's, that's what I saw when I came into the horse farm. Over here is the horse farm, right here. And there's a walking trail that comes in, loops around, comes right next to the wetland right here, comes back up. So, and there's also a really old road that goes right through the wetland. Who knows how long ago that was put there, but that's on here, too, that you can see. So it's very easy to see all the flags and get back there. If you guys wanted to check it out, I'd be glad to take you back there. The trail, the walking trail is probably at least five feet, probably wide.
So our strategy for this site was to just stay out of the wetlands. There's enough land to do what we need to do. We don't need to work in a hundred-foot buffer. And that, that's our overall plan for this project.
So...
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. So your entire project is going to, is going to be outside the buffer?
That's correct.
Okay. And so you're here tonight to essentially ask us to approve the wetland flagging, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Who did the flagging?
I did.
Okay. So then we should have to get down there and observe that so we can approve such flagging. You said, okay, everything is there. You said, visible. And, okay, either go through this area here?
Yep.
And now, you were talking about a horse barn up the, up the other end?
Yeah, there's a horse farm up here that...
What street is up there?
Hart Street.
That's, that's you, then?
That's Hart, yeah. The Mendoza's that...
The Mendoza's allowed us to walk through their property to, to access it, to make it easy for her. But we're, we're just gonna, we're just gonna use the regular access roads to get in there so we can...
Is that's not blocked?
Sometimes the gates are locked, but we can, I can arrange to have them unlocked. They just need a little bit of notice.
Have you been, have you been up there at all? For fifty years?
No, no. No, checking the flags.
I haven't checked any flags, but I, I can, if the sun goes down and it gets really dark, I can still walk through trails.
You've been there.
They're nice trails.
And it's easier to get into from Mendoza's property than it is to go into Elm Street?
It is easier to, through Bill Mendoza's.
Yeah, it's about a mile, sure.
If you like, I could ask Bill for the permission to cross his path. There you, I didn't see you back there.
Okay, well, uh... Do we, do we ask for Marty to get in and require, uh...
This, this, this site here is pretty, it drops right down.
You know, 'cause if they're gonna be more than a hundred feet, it's, even if they were off by five feet, it wouldn't make a difference.
No. I don't think we can do it.
Okay, I, you know, I'm, I, as I'll get the contours, it doesn't appear that way.
No, it'd...
Yeah, look right here.
It'd come straight down to it.
Yeah.
Right into the wetland.
Okay.
What do you guys wanna go up there and take a look at? You want us to be with you?
Now, how far, okay, we, you can't, we can't drive up there, up to the power lines, then? We can't drive there?
If the gate is unlocked in both, if one gate's unlocked, this...
You can, you can drive right into the gate.
Up to there, yeah.
You can drive right up to here.
He can't.
No.
No, he can, he, he doesn't have four-wheel drive, he goes. And that last stretch before you hit the tower line, you, it's, it's pretty steep, pretty rocky.
Yeah. Well, I, I remember walking in there. I did some walking. I parked out on Elm Street and then did a hike. That, that was for the first project.
Yeah, did, did you go to the tow, all the way to the tower line?
I don't think so.
I don't either. 'Cause you would've known, you wouldn't have been able to walk. It's easier to go into a Mendoza's property. And if you'll just show him where, you know, right...
He's right up here.
Yeah, you can just, you can just walk from Mendo, there's a trail.
Yeah.
That runs right behind Mendoza's barn. And it'll, it'll go right down to that, that trail there.
I'd just like you to get permission from Mr. Mendoza to do that, though.
We certainly wouldn't go on that property without the permission.
Yeah, you can go on, just give us a notice. 'Cause sometimes if they give him riding lessons and stuff, it could swoop the horses. Just so she knows.
Okay, I, I wouldn't know when, when I'll be going there, but if I just make my, my presence and, and say hello.
You can drive right into his barn.
Yeah.
What, what number is, well, it's on, it's on Hart Street, so that's a...
It's the... Eight seventy-five Hart Street. There's a, there's a sign for the name of their farm right on the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it's Whitman, that looks right.
Bill, you might have to show him so you don't get lost.
Now, do you have a card in case I get lost or something and I need to go back again and just, um...
If you'd like to give me a call, I'll try and meet you out the other day. You're gonna do it to this stuff.
Yeah, I've got, I got my daughter coming in from Colorado, so I...
Good for you.
It's just a matter of, of...
In case you get lost?
Yeah. Give me your card, too, that, uh... Now, Mr. Mendoza, what, what was your address?
Eight seventy-five.
I don't think there's a number out there.
Just call my cell phone.
Okay.
I was gonna say, maybe I should give you my cell, too.
Yeah, the number's on the sign.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Help me to write my cell on there, just in case I'm not the after last night.
Okay.
You can say again.
Now, yeah, now how far, how far will walk is that through, from Mendoza's through there? Is it...
Couple of hundred feet.
Oh, that's...
It's an easy walk.
It's really not that long.
It's an easy, it's an easy walk. Go up the, this way, this is a little tougher.
Okay, all right.
Once, once you come onto Mr. Mendoza's property, his barn's over here, and he's got a riding ring at this top point. You walk in through here, you walk in, you take a right. You walk along the trail, and you'll see another trail that cuts across like this. That's where, that's where this wetland is, right here.
Okay, all right.
You'll be right on, you'll see the flags.
Let's pass your house.
Yeah. It's most all the way to the end of the road.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right, anybody else got anything on this project? Guess not.
We, we do have one, one related to this project. We have something that's related to this project. On this array right here. This, coming past this one, what we were thinking of doing is building a gravel road around this so we get past it without, uh...
Having to go through it every time.
Having, having to go through it every time. And because this is, we're gonna be connecting this, what we're going to do is, because we would stay within, outside the hundred-foot buffer all the way around here. The only point I have a problem with is right here. It just, I mean, just touched the hundred-foot buffer. You see it right there? This exists, a fence. And what we do is go right back onto the road, and the road's already there. But just, we get around this array.
Now, all those little dots that you have there, that's the top of the hill?
Which...
No, on your left, oh, yes.
Oh, that, that's all wet.
Oh, it's, oh, it's wet?
These, these is all wet ones. This is wet, this is wet, this is wet, this is an existing roadway across here, there's another existing roadway across here.
Why would you wanna build another road all the way around when you got one right through the road?
There's a fence there with a gate.
Yeah.
For the exact reason we're having a conversation right now about you not be able to drive up there unless I get it unlocked for you. I'd like to be able to get access to the back part of my property without having to go right through one of the soul, the subarray, that first subarray. So if we make that simple diversion around the outside of it, then we don't have to go through any gates, and we can get to the back of the property.
Okay. Where, where his, where his concern, right where your concern is, that bulge right, no, up, go up a little bit, on the same row line, on the same line the two...
This right here?
No.
No, the dock line.
Your, that line right there. Come down one inch. See that loop, that little bump you got right there?
Yeah.
Where you're concerned with, that's ledge.
Okay.
That's a ledge.
So, we looked at it, Jim Pavlik, Justin Potter and I walked it the other day. There is some ledge outcropping in that area.
So are you gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna cut that out, blast it out?
We could probably just simply cover it with gravel to make it so that we can get over it. The ledge that's exposed right now, it's sticking about six inches out of the ground.
Yeah, that's a, why I'm concerned, a ledge you're making up to drive. And you got, you got a driveway with, with, with two key locks.
Well, we're trying to avoid the situation like with the conversation we just had. See, I don't want to have key access to those arrays. I don't want to have responsibility in case something ever went wrong inside of that thing, even though I'm the landowner. But I wanna be able to access my land by going around it. In order to do that, all I need is literally a few feet within the one-hundred-foot buffer to allow me to get outside of the fence line. And by doing that, I never have to think about a key again.
Once we get past here, even this one here, we have a road all the way around it.
Yeah, well, we're familiar with the road.
Okay.
Okay, now, is that on your notice of intent?
No, it is not. It's, it's, we were just, because we're outside the buffer every place, but just right here, there's a, just a, probably ten feet of it that we touch, a hundred-foot buffer. We were just, that's why, we just wanted to come in here and see if we could do it without filing a, uh...
I don't think so. That's my opinion. I don't know what, how the bullet feels, but I'm familiar enough with that piece of...
Oh, I know you are.
To know that corner is wet and, 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 you know. The only, the only piece that's not wet is, is where the ledge pops out on the ground.
Well, we were gonna hug right, right close to that.
It's, uh, it's not wet up there. And that section's definitely not wet. I just walked it. We've had a lot of rain.
Okay.
But there is a piece of ledge that comes out. It's six, it's six inches exposed right now. I was looking at it. And Jim and I discussed putting gravel over it so we can just, you know, drive across it. As opposed to trying to blast it out or dig it out or anything like that.
That, that's, uh... Let's, let's just stick with the filing for the...
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine.
And we decided that Jim is gonna go in and check your flag line. And then we'll get that done before, uh...
Okay.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll try to even get there tomorrow if I can. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I have to do it soon because I have daughter coming in.
All right, no further discussion on this project. All right, we'll continue the hearing.
Okay, and we'll get up there and, uh, if you want, so...
Sure, thank you for the next... Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. If you'd like a tour, just give me a call. It's coming.
Okay, well, I, I got it here and, um...
That's the next meeting day, July twelve?
Twelve, yes. Twelve.
So you'll, you'll put us on the agenda? We need to call or anything, or we're automatically on the agenda?
You're on.
You're on, yeah, we'll continue.
Thank you.
Reed Brothers, Reed Brothers Farm? Yes, for you. You, too? Yes.
Oh, that's a two-fa, huh?
Yeah.
We're not paying, charging us both, are you?
Oh, yeah, I need the green cards. All right.
Notice, uh, by the Reed Brothers. Charlie's usually got all this stuff taken care of. Familiar with everything when he gets here, but he has an emergency thing and he couldn't get here. So I'm gonna have to catch up.
Okay.
Okay.
When he catches up.
I don't know what they're doing over there, you. The proposal house lot on the back field.
Want me to give you guys a...
Yeah, drag that off.
A summary?
Uh, in a moment. I, I have, um...
You have two pieces. You and I will have to split this one.
Okay, well, we have a good one up here, so you can show us. So that might even be better to see it. It's, it's color-coded.
Yep.
And, okay, let's start with the street. Williams, okay?
Yeah, Elm Street's right there.
And what's, I see a road going to the left. That is...
That's Horton.
That's what?
This is Horton.
Horton Street?
This Horton, this is Reed's farm. The stand is right there.
Okay, so this is, okay, so this property, uh, the west side is, okay, north is on the top?
North is up.
Okay, all right.
The east, the east side.
This on the east side?
William Street.
East side of William Street. This is the Segway River here.
No, it's not, okay.
North is straight up.
Okay, all right, I'm orientated.
Okay. All right, so there's an existing road there right now. It's just packed dirt, basically. You can see it right here. It kinda cuts into this lot a little bit. Comes all the way back for access to this back field that they've been farming. Uh, that road's been there prior to the fifties. I found aerial photos of it back to the fifties. And basically, what they're trying to do is just scrape off the top layer, put some, some gravel down, bring it to the back to the same elevation it's at right now. And then there's gonna be a new portion of the driveway so that it doesn't have to be on this other person's lot right here. They're just constructing a new portion.
The other person's lot, that's who?
That is...
Conway.
David Boyton?
Yeah, Boyton. Yes, you're bringing a lot.
Okay. Just a little sliver.
Right.
That goes onto your lot, and they just, you know, they wanna make the driveway so it's not on someone else's lot.
Okay, so now, the Segway Gansett River is there?
Yeah, this is, so this is the river right here. The green is all the BBW.
Okay, wait, the, the river is that whole area right there?
This is the river.
Or just that one line?
And then, yeah, so this is, this is the top bank of the river right here. These other two lines, this is the one-hundred-foot repairing zone. This is the two-hundred-foot. So this, this is the edge of the river. It comes right up to the driveway right here and over here. And it's completely surrounded. This is all wetland. This is all wetland.
And again, what, what is the, the intent is to...
Upgrade the existing road.
Yeah, upgrade. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't be creating this new portion here if it wasn't for the fact that it was on someone else's lot.
Uh, how wide is this? Is it, it's a drive, not a road, correct?
It's a driveway. It's, we did, we access for trucks and tractors to get to the back parcel.
Yeah.
And it is how wide?
I think it's...
Ten to twelve feet, most of it.
Yeah, it's...
I've walked it many times already.
I should take the truck and hares down there. The hares are thirteen-six.
We'll, we'll, we'll get right to you.
Yeah.
It's, it's over two, it's over twelve feet. It's, it's wide.
Okay. No, what I'm looking at is, is, there is an intent to turn it into a roadway next to the, uh, river and then to have it developed.
No.
It's just to access...
Access the property. It may be one house lot out there eventually, but there's nothing other than that.
Okay, if this has been used since the fifties, that's...
Yes.
We're talking sixty years plus?
Sixty plus.
Way before that.
Okay, uh, what, uh... What is, what's the problem with that?
It's getting dis-repaired. It needs to be up, it needs to be fixed. It's starting to, it's starting to, just need a repair. You can take a walk down. You can see it. All we wanna do is scrape it up and then re-gravel it and that's it.
Jim, good farm down there.
Yeah.
And how long is this, uh, drive?
Oh, God.
Let's see. One to forty scale?
On the forty scale? Eighteen, twenty-seven, probably, yeah, thirty-six, probably six, seven thousand.
Okay, so you got a mile rough.
No, quarter of a mile, about a quarter, quarter to a half.
So six to seven hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's nine times forty, it's thirty, yeah, yeah, it'd be about the half a mile, probably half.
Okay.
Pull up here, where they're gonna...
The same...
Put a house in there?
Eventually, we might put a house in there, but right now it's to upgrade it so we can keep driving up and back and forth so we don't lose it. We wanna keep, we wanna keep the existing road that we have right now.
Is that land being farmed now?
Yes.
She's probably gonna take a look at that, too, Bill. All right. Jim, Jack?
Yeah, no, it's, you know, like they say, it's a pretty stable driveway all the way up through it.
Yeah. Have you been out there, Ja, uh, Jack?
Not a long time, no, but I mean, I know where it is, with bits and pieces of it.
Back there a couple of years now, yeah, a couple of years back now.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, you know, it's all established and hired and everything, but I mean, it just...
Yeah.
It's a driveway. And you just wanna move it?
Just move this piece.
Yeah, this is the important part right here because it's on someone else's lot, and now this driveway's gonna have to go through a little piece of wetland right here. And we have replication planned. So that's, you know, this, just improving this, you know, is... I know you guys are saying maybe it's not necessary, but this part right here is definitely necessary to get it off the lot.
But that's, for the most part, that's outside of the, uh...
Right, but it, but it, for purposes, we like to, you know, if we're gonna do that, we wanna, might as well just do the whole.
No, I, I, I hear you. I hear you.
Do it one time and one time over.
Jim, if you know the property, how, how well you know...
I'll go, I'll go with you.
Okay.
You can drive out there.
Let me know when you wanna go.
I'm sorry?
Let me know when you wanna go. I'll go with you.
Well, uh... Maybe even tomorrow.
Let me know, call me.
Uh, are you gonna answer your phone?
Yeah. If it rings, I'll answer it. No guarantee what field I'm gonna be in.
Got some questions?
May know.
No.
You can say what you want, Ruth, though.
That road was there about five hundred years ago.
I can't, there's three people talking. My hearing age only process one.
That road's been in over a hundred-two years.
The what?
That road's been in there more than a hundred years.
Okay.
Yeah, horse and wagon and everything.
Okay, you know, I just think we should, we should go and take a look at it before we act on it, rather than just saying, yeah, go ahead and do it. You know, I understand, well, you know, the need, the, the whole works, but, uh, to give approval sight unseen is not good policy.
I go down with my pickup quite a bit, you know. You wouldn't wanna take a much pleasure car down there.
I'll walk. Okay, so, uh, Jim, I'll give you a call tomorrow on that, and, um, we'll go down there and, um... We should...
Motion to continue till...
Okay, you made it? Okay. So, continue till, um...
Same thing. July twelve.
July twelve.
Yeah.
So let's second it. I'll second, I'll call it fair. Okay. Thanks for coming in.
So don't forget your, your...
I got it.
Have a good one. Have a good night.
You, too.
Good to you.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought, I thought you had a gun there.
Yep, this is our new police station.
About this guy?
Yeah.
Color pictures, we're not used to this.
So, I'm Dan Catches with VHB.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Dan?
Catches, K-E-C-H-E-S.
K-E...
C-H-E-S.
Okay.
I'm with VHB, and this is the proposed Dayton Police Station. This project was last before the commission, almost two years ago. And we're here seeking an amended order of conditions to incorporate some site changes that have happened during the design phase since that time. So since it's been a while, just a quick refresher. This is the site as it's currently proposed of the police station. The primary access is off of Somerset Avenue, this driveway. Secondary access for police only is off of the Dayton Bauer Drive. Parking on the south side, retaining walls and associated landscaping, sidewalk, site features. So that's the general outline of it. How it compares to the original design is this one. So here we have, shown in red is the original design. Those are the plans under the current order of conditions. So you can see the building is here. And the blue, so the building's gotten bigger since then. Originally proposed, we had parking on this side and this side. Originally proposed, we had parking on this side and this side. The parking's been consolidated just on this side, building here and landscaping here. As it relates to the wetland and the buffer, the lines that you see here are the limiter work and the erosion controls. So the original ones shown in red. And that is under the current order conditions. The revised layout is this one. So as you can see, with the revisions to the site layout, we've pulled it away from the wetland a little bit in these areas. The curb line's been pulled back. The retaining wall's been pulled back and shortened a little bit, these site features. No more parking here.
Okay, so you are making less of an impact on the, uh, closeness to the well and to the, um, buffer zone.
Correct. The, the impacts within the buffer zone are reduced.
Okay. Well, that certainly shouldn't be a problem to approve a lesser impact than what we had already approved.
No, what we have to do is we've got to approve modification to the original order of conditions and the original plan that we issued to them people back in, I guess, two years ago.
August 2015.
Okay, so you just, okay. But this here should, because they are doing less of an impact to, to, um.
We need to, we need to approve the new plan. That's what we need to do.
Right, but it's less impact, so there doesn't need to be another public hearing.
Right. Correct.
It's moving away, so that's.
Correct. And, and if we approve this, the, um, this new plan, that'll give them an additional time on their order of conditions to, to complete the job.
Yeah.
Since the impact is going to be less, I do not see it requiring a new public hearing.
No, it doesn't, and we just have to approve the new plan.
Okay, um. Why don't you sit, if anyone has questions out there and not make a motion?
Any questions? Anybody would like to, any input on this police station?
Okay. Okay, I, uh, move that we accept the new plan. Let's see, wait, just hold off a minute. I wanted to make sure my, my motion is accurate. Okay, I move that we accept the new plan for the police station and not require a new public hearing.
Second.
Bill?
Hold a favor.
All right.
Thank you. The other side of that, you see, the finish?
Yeah, that's an updated rendering of what the building is anticipated to look like from Somerset out. It's a little, driveway's a little steeper than that.
Right, rolling right along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, I don't know how much time you got or how much work you got or when you're going to start, but, uh, you can request an extension.
Yes, so that, um, my understanding is the amended order will hold the same finish date. And if we need.
You gotta.
Yeah, my understanding is the, uh, amended order will hold the same expiration date. And if we need to go past that, uh, August 2018, we'll request.
Okay.
At that time.
Okay.
You guys reading the correspondent stuff?
Yeah.
Um, what, I have a question here on number two. Why would DEP issue an extension of the order of conditions? Why was that the request to us?
Well, I guess DEP issued them an order of conditions. I don't know who Bruce LLC is, a Tremont Street subdivision.
Oh, you know what that must be?
No.
Wait on the end, Doc.
Dayton Industries?
Yeah, was that, uh, that Bruce LLC was originally Malik Construction, huh?
Was that the, uh, on the, uh, north side of Tremont Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that was an, we, I think we originally had rejected the.
Right.
And so the DEP gave a superseding order of conditions.
Yeah, but that, like I say, Malik doesn't own that anymore. I think that Bruce LLC.
Okay, that's what it has to be, Tremont Street.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, it's.
Okay, let's go to number three, if you want. Second. Torres, no, I request a compliance for the recent sister renovation. I was there a few days ago. Terrific job. Terrific. I guess you guys have been there too, then?
Yep.
Okay.
I have, well, from a distance, but I know.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, super job, uh, I move that we issue a certificate of compliance.
Second.
Okay.
Hold a favor.
All right. Okay, give me time to write that, then. Okay.
How you doing, Mr. Digges?
Okay, okay, um. I haven't been there. If you've been there, you could.
Well, well, well.
This is number four.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm reading ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, you got to tell people.
Oh, I'm business.
Okay, so, uh.
I have everything here with, uh, as far as this certificate of compliance. Charlie's already signed it.
Okay, uh, you want to make a motion then on that, Jackson?
Yeah, we'll make a motion and we accept it.
Issue a.
Certificate of compliance.
Certificate of compliance.
Two cities have to follow me.
Second.
What can we do for you?
Charlie, my name is Bisher Hashem. I talked to, my name is Bisher Hashem. I talked to Charlie three, four weeks ago. I also talked to Jack. Um, and he put, I thought, he said, he put me on the agenda, and I guess he did it, huh?
Oh, I, I knew you looked familiar. You were looking at this property.
Right, I just, there's, I'm not requesting anything. All I want is to introduce myself to you.
You have a business, Tony?
I do. Okay.
No, just that one.
And, and, uh, and, and just kind of go briefly over what, what.
Oh, you were thinking about the property across the street.
On Somerset Avenue.
Yeah.
Yes. So, um, I do have a, an agreement to, to purchase it. And I know there was, uh, some history behind it that I would like, uh, I would like to not have any good or bad feelings from the past carry over to, to, to me because, um, I'm, I'm a new entity. Uh, and, and I will not only, I will, I'm here to introduce myself and tell you that I am more than willing and able to work with you and, and as I have in the past worked with other boards in town. And, uh, so, so, so that's all I'm requesting, that, that, you know, any, any history behind that before me is, is just.
And it is history.
Exactly, and we turn in a new page and, 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 uh, and, and judge me for what I am, not what was in the past.
Okay, yeah, we won't do that.
Okay. And, uh, and what I would, what, um, I'm aiming to do is we, I would like to come before you on the next meeting, if you could bring the mind putting me on the agenda. We're, we're, we're flagging a new, a new fresh line, you know, the latest, up to dateest. And then I'm sure you're going to have your expert to review it. And what I want to say to you is there's black and there's white, and those are clear, and we're, nobody's going to interfere with that. But whenever there's gray, if we can work together to, to, to try to, to, for the benefit of the, the environment, to try to get what we want to get out of the property up front and leave the back, the back all open so that as to, uh, any, any, any sensitivity in the environment is, is, uh, provided in the back. And I'm, I'm, I'm speaking very general because we, I still don't have any lines firmed up yet. And I don't know what, what, what gray area I may or may not meet. I don't know. But whatever it is that we can do to work, to work with you, um, we're going to be doing it.
Okay, do you have a copy of the old order of conditions that was issued for that property?
I do not. I do not. I, I do, I have worked in town, but I never had the pleasure to work.
I don't even look. We have to use the room a lot.
I might have one here. I might have one here. Might.
What's this? That's, uh, what is this?
Okay.
I thought we did that.
We did, uh.
Oh, no, I know, I know where it is. It's in a separate folder because, uh, oh, I only got. Um, no, I don't have it here. Otherwise I could have run up and made it wrong.
I'm sure you can get on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
But it would, it would, it would do you a lot of good if you had a copy of the order of conditions that we issued for it. And then we would know, because it didn't change from the time we issued it till now.
Right, right.
So, and we could work with that.
So you had issued an AMRA, you have a firm line?
Yes.
I wasn't in line?
No, not, yes and no.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes and no. We, we were challenging their line all the time and they, and they would never, uh, they kept, uh.
That's what I understood, that, that they assumed the line that you didn't approve of, and there was no firm line that was approved, as, as far as I knew.
Their mapping?
You need someplace, you need somewhere to, to start.
Sure.
You had the copy of the order of conditions, it would have the map and the line.
Okay.
And, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Let me see if this door happens to be open.
It might be.
I do, uh, uh, Roslin gave me some information, uh, from the file, but, um, so now how, how does it go, how, I, how do I, like, we file, if we want to, if we want to file an AMRA to firm up the line, I just, we just file it at the next hearing?
Yes.
Next meeting?
Yes.
And then, and then you, uh, you hire an, an expert and we inform the neighbors and all that.
Okay.
So if you don't mind putting me on the agenda for the next hearing, please?
No, I already did.
Oh, you did?
Now, here's, okay, are you going to file with us for the next meeting?
Yes.
That filing then will be your, um, but get it in two weeks before the next meeting, July 14th. So get it in before that.
Okay.
And then that will put you on the.
Agenda.
Agenda.
July 12th.
July 12th, yeah.
Okay.
July 12th.
So who, who do I, who do I file it with?
Conservation, Dayton Conservation Commission.
But is it, do you have a secretary here?
No.
He's, that's Charlie.
So I'm just leaving with the clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We've got a mailbox upstairs. Anybody who give it to us is going to put it in our mailbox.
I understand. All right. And I did look into the easement, and it does exist. It is on record. And we are, we are investigating how we're going to, uh, you know.
Did, did you look up, because when, when we spoke, I told you about the court order.
Yes.
Did you look up that court order?
I did.
Okay, so you got that then?
I did. That I did. But, but frankly, it's of no use to me because.
It doesn't, no, right.
Because it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a challenge between two parties that I'm not going to be a part of.
No, I know, but that gave you, but that gave you.
Yes.
A bit of information about the sensitivity of that property.
Yes.
Because I think there's five rental pools that are there.
Yeah.
And they're interconnected.
Yes.
Okay? Now, that's, that's the important part when, when you do your stuff, that there is.
I believe you.
That, that the critters are moving from one to another. So to separate them with roadways, um.
Jim, we can either start from the beginning. You're in the middle.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly, and, and, and what, the best thing that I learned from that case is the wrong line, all right? The line that's there is the wrong line. That's not the line. I learned that.
Yeah.
So I know that this is not the line, okay? So we're, we're putting in a new line and, and, and we'll start afresh. And let's, let's turn in a new page.
Good.
All right? Thank you, and nice meeting you gentlemen.
Okay. I, I, excuse me, I got a question. Now, you've got, are there two, there's two parcels there, correct? Or one, or just one large parcel?
One large parcel.
Okay. Because that was part of the original problem.
They had filed only on one, on, on, on one parcel, on a piece.
There was only one parcel to begin with.
Oh, yeah?
And when we.
Oh, they had an agreement maybe on that, just the front piece? But the one I have under agreement is the whole, the whole thing in there.
Because the, what happened was, uh, the, what they wanted to do, we said, try the backland because that frontland is too sensitive.
Mm-hmm.
And then they, they tried to subdivide it, and that created their own hardship by saying, well, we can't do that because, because we, we want to, we want to wreck the wetlands.
Right, 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 right.
Okay, so, so, you know, where, where wreck coming from too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You got something about the hearing, Tony?
No, I'm just here getting an education.
Just came in to soak up the air conditioning.
Yeah, that's it.
That would have been a better choice yesterday.
Did he say he's going to fire Henry or better?
He's got to fire more than Henry after all. Let him go. Let him do what he's going to do to him. And he'll call him back.
All right, we done?
I would say.
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All a favor? They're adjourned.
Hey. Just like that.